Evening, welcome to the Monday September ninth MASHPIS Board Selectment Called Meeting to Order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For a moment of silence for those who've lost their lives in service of the country. Thank you. Look for approval of the minutes for Monday, August 12th, regular session, Monday, August 19th, regular session, and Thursday, August 22nd, regular session.
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Yes.
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 Okay. Public comment, we just have one this evening, Steve Peters.
Thanks. First, I do want to say, I appreciate the fact that the selectmen are moving forward with having an open conversation around how we're going to deal with the water quality issue that we have in our town. And we do have a water quality issue. I mean, we need our water to be cleaned up. And I appreciate the fact that we're going to have a conversation that allows all of the interested parties and people that are interested around town to talk about how we should, they believe we should go about getting that done. So I want to thank you for that. I think we're making progress on that. And I commit myself to attending those meetings and keeping everyone, at least in my neighborhood, informed on what comes out of that as well. Whatever the best solution is, you know, we stand by it. I mean, our water has to be cleaned. We get that. But I had to come in and make a public comment today simply because at the last meeting, it went way, way, way over the line. I mean, the things that were said about me was not cool. You can't do that. And I had to come in here and make a statement about that to at least let people know that you crossed that line, you know, someone's going to stand up and defend themselves. And this is the only opportunity that I have right now to do that. So I'm going to read what I wrote down and then do with it what you will, but I need everyone to understand that that was way over the line and nobody should have to deal with anything being said about themselves like that. So I needed to address what happened at the last selectman meeting because I was absolutely appalled at the outbursts from our sewer commissioner. And I hope that you are as well. I have the right to question the decisions that are being made around this table in front of us, as well as the decisions that have been made around a sewer commission. This is a lot of money that we're talking about and it's in a very important project. And I have that right without having to be feared that I'm going to be attacked by my personal character in the middle of a public meeting on television. At that point, I was sitting at home with my little kid, who I brought with me here simply because we're two parents with two kids and we have to divide and conquer. One kid's at a sporting event, another kid had to come with me. And it was important that I came here. That was important to me. So I brought my kid with me to witness that. And then I'm sitting at home with my toddler watching on TV. And I had to sit there and watch as his father was called out by name, a liar, right there on TV. And I had to thank God that my other kid wasn't sitting next to me. Because I don't know if you could imagine what it would be like sitting at home on your couch as your kid, seven-year-old, had to sit next to you and watch his father be called out by name and say, Stephen Peters is a liar. What damage does that do? How do I repair that with my kids? And then on top of that as well, I run a successful business here in town. And I've built that business and it does very well. And I'm very proud of it based on the good work that I do and my character. And that's what brings in new business for me. People appreciate the fact that we have a family-owned business and we treat our clients like family as well. And we're honest and straightforward with them right from the get-go. And so to have something like that thrown out on television and now archived on MashPIS-TV from now till whenever is not acceptable. That's not cool. I didn't do anything to deserve that. And I'll tell you one other thing, too. Everything that I've said up to this point, I honestly believe is not false. Okay? I've made consistently three statements about the wastewater treatment plant. I said it's going to smell. I said our home values will decline and there'll be chemicals used. And I've been following the issue carefully and I have yet to see anything that convinces me that those statements are absolutely false or misleading. GHD stated carefully in the sewer commission meeting that under ideal condition and proper management, the plant will not release a smell. That's very different from saying there will never be a problem with the odor. And all along, we're just talking about having a conversation around if there's an odor, how do we deal with that? What happens? And the response to that can't be from the sewer commission saying, there will never be a smell, there will never be an odor, there will never be a problem. Because GHD won't say that. And I guarantee you, our town wouldn't put that in writing for us either. Because they could be slip-ups. We get it, mishaps happen. We're trying to be reasonable in this process, but we're reaching an unreasonable wall on the other end that's refusing to just have basic conversations around those issues that we're talking about. You can't build a wastewater treatment plant at the entrance to my neighborhood and not expect that our home values are going to be depreciated or something's going to happen. I mean, you don't pull into a neighborhood and say, oh, what's this massive building right here? Oh, it's wastewater treatment plant? I will buy that house across the street from it at the same value that I would if there was no wastewater treatment plant there. So we want to have that conversation. You know, how do we start to manage that? How do we, you know, measure it? Those are important things here. You know, and I also make the point as well that I had the opportunity at the last meeting to also discuss the concerns that I've had around the lack of participation that had been happening between the selectmen and my town and my neighbors as well. And that point also got attacked. And while I did attend a sewer commission meeting along with my neighbors, we were never allowed at that wastewater treatment, at that sewer commission meeting, to talk about the issues that would impact our neighborhood. We weren't allowed to talk about the smell. We weren't allowed to talk about the chemicals that were being used. And we weren't allowed to talk about the placement of it in our neighborhood. All we were allowed to talk about at that meeting was the design of the facility. And I don't care if the facilities got stucco or clapboards or whatever it is. Those aren't the issues that we wanted to talk about that were there. We weren't allowed to talk about those. So when I sat at that last meeting, and I told you in the public comment that our issue still hadn't been discussed, that wasn't false. Okay? It's also truly unfortunate that I've had to withstand the attack that when the sewer commissioner started attacking me by name on that, although you did tell him, look, that's out of line, he was then allowed to just continue to ramble on. And although he didn't call me out at that point by name, he continued just to attack, attack me line by line. He just wasn't saying my name. And you allowed that to continue. And I don't think that was right from you. He should, and whether or not he was standing up here as the sewer commissioner or the water commissioner or as simply the resident in town, I think it should have been stopped at that point and said, okay, we've heard enough from this. We need to break this and go somewhere else. This is not a constructive conversation. But that didn't happen. So I'm going to stand here. I'm going to still continue to fight for clean water. That is absolutely my priority. But I will not stand by and watch a plan that could cost me the equity of my home in addition to an undetermined amount of taxes and fees without that conversation that I'm glad that we are going to be able to have here. And I want to be able to do that without being attacked. And I don't know at this point how to really rectify the damage that's been done through this, but I got to think that we're going to have to all work together on this. And I'd like to see from this here, a meeting that at least sits down with myself and the sewer commissioner and the selectmen and hopefully some of our town managers as well, to figure out how we can have reasonable adult conversations without the mudslinging. Because that's just not acceptable. So we got to figure out how to move forward and keep our conversation above bar. But I needed to make my point heard because I can't explain to you how infuriating it is to be sitting at home and watch something like that unfold. Just not cool. Not cool at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first appointment with Department of Public Works Director Catherine Laurent, Stormwater Management Update.
Good evening. I'm here with our-
You pulled the mic really close to you, Catherine.
I'm here with our consultant, Ty and Bond, Gabrielle Belfit from Ty and Bond, to give you an update. We've completed our first year of our annual permit with EPA/DEP for our stormwater activities. We are in the process of finalizing our report for the year. And Gabrielle will give you some of the highlights of what we've accomplished and what we have coming up in this next year.
Thank you very much. As you know, June 4th, 2019, EPA and MassDEP issued MashPIS authorization to discharge stormwater to the state. And that is a five-year permit that is going to expire in 2022. As part of the permit, the first thing that the town needed to do was develop a stormwater management plan. And I was here before you on June 17th, it seems only a few months ago, to give you some of the highlights of that plan. And the real purpose was to provide an opportunity for the public to hear about the plan and to provide comment if they wanted to. So the plan was submitted in July, and you can find that plan. It's located online at the DPW. They've established a stormwater page. And everything having to do with the stormwater program is going to be up on that page. So there's going to be a lot of information. I'll reference some of that as I go through what we did in permit year one and what we're planning to do next year. That stormwater management plan is really the blueprint for what MashPIS is planning to do over the next five years to comply with each one of the minimum control measures as required in the permit. It's a live document. Unlike the former permit, it was very difficult to change what you were going to do to comply with each permit requirement. With this, it's a working document. The Stormwater Task Force meets once a year and has the opportunity to look at the best management plans that have been suggested to comply with each minimum control measure, evaluate how they are working, and make modifications. So it's very easy. It's online. No paperwork needs to be filed with the state if the town wants to change the plan. So that's a really big improvement. We're here today again to continue to have that opportunity for public education and outreach. And as this annual requirement will take place over the next five years, we discussed rotating that. So we might not see you next year. We might do this at the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, unless you really want us to come back, which we can. So those are the departments and the commissions that really are implementing this plan. So it makes sense to, you know, to hear from them and give them an opportunity for direct feedback. So just real quickly, I'm going to run through what the permit year one requirements were and how MashPIS delivered each one of those. So the first one was the Public Education and Outreach Program. So MashPIS did two things. There were many, many different public education requirements of the plan, having to do with nitrogen and phosphorus and the impairments that impact MashPIS water bodies. And so all the elements of public education have been put online. There's a master page which addresses different residential construction businesses with specific suggestions for how not just residential people, but all different groups can help with meeting, reducing stormwater pollution. And very important is we developed a survey for the first year. There's a survey up there. This survey is geared toward residential homeowners. And it's to kind of gauge their awareness, what they do with fertilizer, dog walking, car washing, things like that. And to, you know, kind of get a feel for what their perception is about stormwater and how important that is to-
Where do you have these results from the survey?
So we're going to keep that up until we get some meaningful numbers. So we had Clay GIS give us, you know, a look at how many hits have been to the stormwater page so far. And it's not a high number.
Okay.
So we do, we really do need to do some public outreach to let people know that the survey's there and that the public education information is there.
Do you do a mail-out or anything with that?
No, we have not done anything that's really paper generating. We're trying to keep this digital. But I think we could do a press release. We can put up an announcement on the main page of the town's main page and think about some other ways to let people know to go online, Town a Sandwich, DPW, Stormwater Management-
Town of Mash-
Oh, sorry.
[laughing]
What did I say? I'm sorry.
Yeah, all these MS4 permits aren't cut and paste.
Sorry. Town of MashPIS, DPW, Stormwater Management Program. And you'll see right there, survey. And then the Water Matters to MashPIS, that page that opens, and then links to the different brochures and FAQs and things like that. So the pet waste FAQ is really worth looking at. It's pretty frightening. So if you have any other suggestions, we'd love to hear them to help get the word out on that. So the next big portion for permit year one has to do with the Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination Plan, or IDDE. So there's kind of three parts to that. There's an IDD bylaw. There's an IDD written plan. And there's staff training. And the goal of IDD is to make sure that no illicit discharges, which think of them as things that get onto the street or into waterways that are not stormwater, so that these are not getting into MashPIS surface water through the municipal stormwater system, that staff are trained to recognize what an illicit discharge is, and that if they're found, the town has written procedures-
What municipal stormwater system are we talking about?
We're talking about the drainage system, the roads, the gutters, the catch-
I mean, it's all side of the road runoff into either right off the road or into drywells. We have no conveyance system to speak up to.
Well, you don't have a pipe conveyance system, but that gets to what is the definition of an outfall. So it can be a curb cut that is draining to a wetland. So I'm going to discuss the definition of what an outfall is in just one second. So no, there are most definitely opportunities for illicit discharge. So here's illicit discharge is sediment. Sediment is not stormwater and it is a pollutant. And for example, I can think of examples where there wasn't a curb cut, but just roadway drainage over time degraded the pavement. So there was direct runoff from the road into a river.
So do we have an inventory of what sites we have that have direct discharge, either engineered that way or worn out that way into surface water bodies and down?
That's what we are working on updating. Yes.
Right.
And are we going to have a strategy to incrementally take care of those?
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to talk about that in just one half of a second. Well, actually, the only other thing that I had to say is-
Isn't that 90% of the benefit that's going to come out of this program, not worried about, you know, a little bit of driveway runoff into a drainage ditch?
Well, we don't have to, we're not going to have to worry about any other private roads for sure. But we do need to, regardless of what the outfall mapping is, if you eliminated all of your outfalls, you would still need to be addressing public education and outreach. You would still need to be addressing good housekeeping. Yes, it would be a wonderful thing. And right now, as it stands, MashPIS has fewer outfalls than I have seen in any community I've worked with. So right off the bat, you're starting in a really good place. Out of the 33 outfalls that Senior AmeriCorps identified for you back in 2001 or two, some, a long, long time ago, so far, we've only confirmed that three of those are actual outfalls that meet the definition of the US EPA, as either piped or curb cut where point discharge coming from MashPIS municipal stormwater system where it can reasonably expect it to enter water of the US, whether that be a wetland or surface water. So we're continuing to look at also intersections where roads are crossings, stream crossings. And we're going to be wrapping up that mapping this week. And Drew will be, Conservation Commission will be reviewing our protocol and our mapping. And he may be doing some field assessment where we're looking, we're finding an outfall that's within 100 feet of a wetland. No, we're finding an outfall, but it's not on a MassDEP wetland GIS layer, or it's not in a floodplain. And he wants to be able to go out and say, there are no wetlands. There's no way, there's no reasonable way that discharge from this point can make it to water of the US. Anyway, so that's the outfall mapping. So good, we took care of that one. And then that map will be posted on the town website as well. So good housekeeping is another area. This past year, we updated the spill prevention and countermeasure control plan for the DPW. That's an oil spill plan that they're required to have through federal regulation due to the amount of oil that's stored above ground. And primarily, that has to do with the fuel tank. And then all staff were trained on spill prevention and environmental safety in June. And then lastly, we reviewed the construction sediment erosion control bylaws. And we know that there is a few updates that need to be made there. We'll be working with the bylaw committee in the future to get those totally up to snuff. So Catherine mentioned, the year one annual report is under development right now. Our draft will be released to the town in another week or so. And Catherine is authorized to sign it now for the first time. And so we will be submitting that annual report to EPA and DEP on the 30th, which is the deadline. So that's all going very well. And the final thing is, I wanted to let you know, permit year two, just some of the highlights, we'll be completing a townwide facility inventory. This is all sites and facilities that are owned and operated by the town. And we'll be developing written procedures for operation maintenance with a focus on those activities that have high pollutant potential. And this is everything from lawn mowing to lawn care to vehicle storage, vehicle washing, catch basin cleaning, the whole. There is a list right now of those municipal facilities is about 30.
They're all in the DPW.
We've got about 35 so far right now, our preliminary map. And that may change very, very slightly. We may add one or two stormwater retention features that are not associated really with a site. They're on a roadway, but they're, they need to be managed and included in the inventory. We'll also be developing a detailed stormwater pollution prevention plan for the DPW and the transfer station as required by the permits. And finally, we'll be updating the town's bylaw for post-construction stormwater runoff from new and redevelopment and streamlining procedures for site plan review and submission of as-built drawings for construction projects. So that is it. Wasn't really worthy of a slideshow, really, or a handout, but wanted to let you know where we were. We've got a great schedule and timeline. We're checking off the boxes. And meeting together as a task force, we had a really good discussion about how all of the different departments that are involved in erosion and stormwater control can streamline the process, make sure that nothing is going through the cracks, that there's no duplication, and procedures are consistent. So I think it's worthwhile. And that sediment is an illicit discharge, so.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
So do we have a stormwater management plan in place now?
Yes, you do.
And if so, how are we changing the plan? Are we implementing new procedures? Or are we, what is the difference between the old and the new?
So there never was a stormwater plan before. This is brand new. Before this, MashPIS has had a permit since 2005, thereabouts. And that permit was based on a notice of intent that was submitted to the state, which ticked off where the impaired water bodies were, how many outfalls you had, and then best management practices that the town was going to do to meet the minimum control measures. Those minimum control measures really haven't changed, but the, there was no flexibility. It was town will hold, can you give me an example from your old plan?
No, but can I jump in for a minute?
Sure.
We had a plan. It was not a written document. So as part of this new permit, we actually have to have a written document. So I don't know that anything has changed, but it's in writing what we've been doing for the last 20 years.
So we put our plans in writing, basically.
Yes. Yes.
So have the requirements for a house being built on a pond, estuary, or bay, have they changed?
No, that would still be subject to the Conservation Commission rules and regulations.
So it's the same requirements?
These are strictly having to do with the town's infrastructure, not private property.
Oh.
So this is for what we do on our own properties, not what a single-family homeowner may be doing.
New construction. Well, I heard new construction and that's why-
Those are still regulated by the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the Building Department.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Sorry, I've gotten too much detail.
I would just ask, you know, I think this whole stormwater program, the MS4 program, is built for largely large cities that they tried to shoehorn into small towns. Most of the, in my opinion, most of the requirements require a fair amount of effort, or check-the-box exercises, and don't result in a hell of a lot of water quality improvement. Thing we could, I would encourage us to spend time on is get the direct discharges out of the rivers and ponds, like the boat ramps. I mean, you know, Great River, you did some stormwater control, a little bit down by the Baker One. But otherwise, they're all designed to run right down into the water.
Yes.
And I don't see us doing anything about those. So I would encourage a little less on the process, a little bit more on actually just getting the drainage out of the water bodies where we know they exist. There's more than three.
Yeah, I can come up with a dozen off the top of my head. And let's just do that. The permit compliance stuff, I mean.
Redirect the drainage.
Yeah. The data come after you.
It strikes the problem.
If this is a long way off. So I would put our emphasis on getting the roadway fixed and the drainage structures fixed. And we'll get more out of it than we will just complying with the rules. Are we going to see a built-in to the road bond program and like, a series of drainage improvements to implement this? Or where's this fit in higher?
So this is a conversation that I will be having with the town manager as we develop our operating budget for FY '21. Right now, we don't have a separate line item in our budget. It comes out of our road construction, our road maintenance. And the last few years, it's been taking up a lot of that budget. So, you know, our emphasis has shifted from, you know, actually maintaining the road surfaces to, you know, doing drainage projects. So I think that the town does need to start looking at some additional funding so that we are able to still accomplish both.
Yeah. I certainly don't want to see us redoing a road and not fixing the underlying drainage where there's a surface water impact.
No, that's, yeah, no, that's a given. As we're right now, as you all know, we have a major project on Katuat Road. And there were significant drainage improvements that were included as part of that project. So any road construction will include drainage work. But just with the cost of construction, it's becoming where, you know, we don't have the funds to do a significant project like that, except if we're saving up our Chapter 90 for several years, which is what we're doing with Chapter-
There any emphasis on green infrastructure? Because just putting the road drainage into the ground doesn't do anything to get any of the nutrients out of it.
We do look at that. We are limited by right of way. You know, a lot of the roads that-
So mostly no.
Mostly no. We do have an area on Katuat Road where there is adjacent town property. So we were able to incorporate some of that. But we, you know, are mostly, you know, existing developed roadways. So it's limited without, I guess, taking property or looking at if there's town property nearby.
So mostly we're limited to sediment improvements and not much in the way of nutrients.
Right. Right.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Gabby.
Thank you very much.
Catherine, you want to talk about amendments of the contract for the operation of the transfer station?
So, the board had discussed this briefly back in June when you awarded the contract for the F Y twenty transfer station operation. The contractor had proposed shared use of the, the yard waste area at the facility. The board was agreeable to taking a look at that as a potential revenue and also a service for Mashpee residents and business owners. So, what you have before you are a list of fourteen conditions that were developed with the operator that I think addressed some of the concerns that were raised, or hopefully, all of the concerns that were raised at your last meeting, and talks a little bit about how the operation would coexist with the transfer station.
And they were with, okay with all of these?
Yes.
They were.
Questions?
I know people have been asking what's going on at the transfer station.
How do you, with the office trailer where it's indicated on the map, how do you keep people out of our operation since all that's passed the entranceway to the recycling center?
So, during the days that the transfer station is open, there is a gate attendant. There will still be a gate attendant as you enter the property who would direct the traffic. If, if they have a permit or sticker, they would be allowed to continue into the transfer station property. If they do not have a sticker, then, and they're, are there specifically for this operation, they would be directed, you know, to continue straight back to, to the rear area.
How's that actually gonna happen?
They're gonna have to keep an eye on things. There's, there's no...
I mean, they're gonna do their continual practice of being in the shed, waving you through, or like, how's that gonna work?
That is a, a conversation. They're gonna have to, to be out there looking at the vehicles as they enter and, and being able, as I said, to, to direct them to the appropriate location.
Because I mean, the way they're doing it now, there's, it would be absolutely no control over, since you just wave you by and doesn't get up out of the chair.
Is there any clause in here that if we don't think that it's working the best way that it can be?
So, these are just the conditions. There will be the standard language of, of the contract where that addresses that, I guess, that point, that if, if there is a problem, then there is a process for addressing it, or, or...
Are there penalties?
We have not talked about penalties. I mean, I think the penalty is that they would be in violation of, of their, their conditions, and, and they would not...
My question would be, so what?
And, and not be able to operate. You would, you would...
That's an empty threat, because we've got one bidder. So, we're gonna say, you're done? I mean, what's, what's, there has to be some financial penalty to them, or they're gonna continue to, they'll, I mean, what are, what are we, what are we gonna do if the operator's violating the terms of, and our choice is terminate the contract or let them do what they're doing?
I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused, violating, violating the terms as it relates to this operation?
Any terms, any terms. I guess, you know, so we let them do this, and we have, and we lose control over who goes in and who goes out of our portion of the facility. And without a penalties clause, we terminate what?
Their use of this yard waste area for their business.
We still have a contract with the front part.
This is an amendment to that. I guess what I'm suggesting is, if we're reopening the contract, we should have a penalties clause that gives us some effective tool beyond what we currently have, which is to kind of strong-arm a little bit with no real ability to, I mean, you know, enforce anything other than we're not happy with how this is gonna go.
We hold back the payment until...
I don't know, but I, I think you need to have some type of explicit provision that they agree to, so you don't end up in one of these circular conversations about we don't have the right to penalize them.
How, I don't know where they're going to, if someone's coming in and using the back of the yard, which basically this is, they're gonna go straight to the back of the yard. They don't go through recycling. They don't go through the shed. They go straight down to the left, straight to the back of the yard.
Correct.
What's down the back of the yard, but to get rid of it. And people will identify what vehicles are going down there and what the charge is and what pile they're going to, whether they're purchasing mulch or loom or whatever. So, I don't, I don't see how it can be that confusing.
So, they're gonna have their office trailer right there, Andrew. So, when you get down to the end...
Yeah, but that's past the point at which the, they would take a right turn to go to our facility.
I know what he's...
So, there's nobody, if there's, if there's no effective control at the gate...
I know what you're saying.
Once they're in, they're in. And who's watching to see whether they don't dump a bunch of trash without a residential sticker?
That's right.
Go through, take a right, go down to the, to the, to the yard, pick up what they came to pick up, and go on their merry way.
Right.
And we get all wrapped around the axle about, you know, the limits on trash and making sure people have stickers. And we've got a, we're inviting people who don't have stickers into the facility with no effective means of controlling their access.
He's referring to them sitting there in their seats, waving everybody through.
Right, right.
Are they gonna go straight?
And not paying attention whether they go straight or take a right.
Right. Because they're not validating the stickers.
Unless they go through the shed.
Yeah, either.
It's like, he's got, he has a valid point, Catherine. I mean, I don't know how you do that, but it's, the weight will be tossed on these shoulders of, gotta do.
We can certainly discuss some sort of, of penalty or enforcement provision and have a, a conversation with the operator. You know, it's not just the responsibility. I guess the, the first line of defense is the gate attendant as you enter the property. But, you know, people that are in the recycling area, you know, they should be looking to make sure the vehicles that are, are pulling up to recycle have a, have a sticker. And the same with the, the trash building. There needs to be improved oversight, so we can...
And the other thing is, I want to make sure that, you know, we, we pay for a certain amount of staffing at that location. I don't want to see them divert some of our staff that we're paying for effectively.
We talked about that.
And, and use them as the second gate attendant at the right, you know, whatever they do, they gotta do. You know, if there's an extra body involved with this, then...
Yes, that was discussed, and that's condition number five, yes.
That was, that was in the...
Yeah. And, and he does make a good point, he makes a good point here. So, it's almost as if the shack, the guard shack needs to be at the entrance to the town use of the facility, which is the recycling hostel. I mean, that's where everybody enters, is through the recycling. So, it's, it's almost like the shack at the gate.
I was not involved with the design of the facility.
I know. I know. What, why you, was this used intended? So, sometimes there's costs with intended changes.
Right. It's, it's, it's not ideal. It's, you know, we've had issue with the traffic queuing up on, on Asher's Path on, you know, at certain times of day. It's too close to the road. So, right, in a perfect world, we'd move it to another location. But there are some costs associated with that because of utilities. But that is something you can...
It might be something we gotta do.
Look at long-term.
Very funny.
Thank you.
Yeah, I picked up on that, yeah. Because we did talk also about going to town meeting and looking for the money to put in a barcode reader, so we don't have to rely on somebody sitting in the gate, and we can actually know who's going in and out.
Right.
So, maybe the thing to do is look at that for the spring, move the shed, move the entranceway, improve the access.
Andrew, we, we did talk about the, the plate reader, and we did have someone in here, and, and we went through that procedure. Was it two years ago now?
Yes.
And the problem we have is the location of the shed, because they keep, they, they can't read it in, in the timeframe that it takes from coming to the street to that shed. So, that was an issue that had to be addressed as well.
Okay. Well, then, why don't we do it? I mean, anyway, I think, you know, is there any urgency that this needs to get taken care of tonight?
The operator was hoping to be able to start use of the property October first.
Well, then that ought to incentivize them to agree to a penalties clause for compliance, so we can do them on the 23rd. Yes?
If you would like, what I can do is check with town council, see if we can add some language with the penalty clause. I would like to throw some language in that enables them to have at least some form of due process as far as a complaint's received, we're not just unilaterally calling it a breach, we give them an opportunity to be heard.
I think that's a good...
So, I mean, one thing we could do is bring it back on the 23rd. I don't have any issue with any other conditions. I don't know if anybody else does.
No.
No.
Or we could authorize town manager to sign an amendment with an appropriate penalty clause added. I'd be comfortable doing that.
That's fine.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I like that. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for appointments. I'll draw your attention to communication we received from Micro Posa from on water quality. So, they're for everybody to read, largely asking for a variety of issues be addressed, and some of which we can take up in our special meetings, but in particular, to factor in the needs of the freshwater bodies into our water quality management program, because they are largely currently not. So, maybe we'll use this letter and a couple others like it to frame some of the discussion that we're having.
I have a few letters that came in too, Andrew, that were brought into the office on what we're doing with our water quality.
Okay. So, we'll just make sure everybody gets a copy.
Yes, I have a copy.
Some of these I've seen, some of these I haven't.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
No old business, new business. We had a discussion, a request for an appointment to the zoning board of appeals by Ms. Doyle. We're notified in this, that you're no longer interested in C B A?
Yeah, I can read the letter, but do you have a copy?
Yeah, so basically, I have a copy of the letter, but there's no action to be taken on this.
Nope.
Table that one.
Table.
Next, we have a discussion and approval of a temporary signed permit for the sixth annual pet fest, September 28th. Gabby, do you want to speak to this? Would you like to advertise your event?
Sure, we're gonna have... On the 28th of September, we have Dr. Oldham from Mashpee...
Veterinary.
Thank you. Mashpee Vets coming to offer services for people who are wanting to get their pets, cats, dogs, turkeys, whatever, shot. We have different things going on with the police department and their, their dog. We have just an all-day family fun packed...
From eleven to two?
From eleven to two.
Okay.
With a rain date on Sunday.
Sunday. So, Saturday, September 28th, rain date, September 29th. A motion to approve the event and sign permit applications?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
See you next year.
It's a good event.
Good job.
Next, I'm gonna look to town manager for some input on a execution of an intermissible agreement between the town of Mashpee and the Mashpee Water District.
Yes, I did meet with Mr. Marks from the Water District. Long story short and summary, the use of our staff from the Water District has diminished over the years, and it's continued in that trend. And he believes that it will continue in the years going forward. So, therefore, again, in summary, they were looking for a reduction. I was looking for an increase. So, we agreed to just continue as is, and...
So, your opinion is a fair deal for the town for the effort?
Based on the very articulated points that Mr. Marks brought up in our very productive conversation, I believe that it's a fair deal, and I recommend that you authorize it to be approved.
Is there a motion to approve the intermissible agreement between the town of Mashpee and the Mashpee Water District?
Yes, as presented.
All right, second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
You're rather persuasive. Next, something I asked to be put on when we issued the license for Knockabout Beer Company for their outdoor entertainment license. We did it with a thirty-day trial period. And I just asked, Peter, would you mind coming up? I thought it important, if we're gonna start, if we're gonna do things with sort of temporary check-ins, that it was important to actually have the check-in. And I'm aware of no complaints, no issues. Been brought forward by neighbors and the like. I was curious, how you felt it went? Did it meet your expectations? You happy with how it's...
Peter with Knockabout here, Peter Merner. Very happy. Thank you for calling me here tonight. And, yeah, we're very happy with the way things went, and we're glad you guys gave us a chance, and hopefully, it all played out in a way that you guys are happy about as well.
Yeah.
Glad it worked out for you.
It's great.
I, I would just echo that Peter's been a real pleasure to work with. All of the communication is very productive. He's a, a real decent person, and I appreciate all of the communication that he has approached the town on in a proactive manner. And it just goes to show that it can work.
It can work, that's right.
No complaints.
No. But, and as, as, as the lone no vote on your license, I did want to actually have you come in and just tell you, I appreciate the fact that you did it well and did it right.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I was wrong about opposing it, and I wanted to give you the opportunity to let people know that you had done the job you said you would do and enhance the community experience. So, thank you for doing it.
Well, appreciate it, thank you guys. Well, we're gonna be here for a long time. So, you know, that's, we're here to be part of the community. So, thank you.
But, thank you, Peter.
Well done.
Cheers, guys.
Well done, Peter.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next is a discussion with Ms. Oakley, Mr. Robbins, and Ms. Alfonzo. As a follow-up to, come on up, public comment that you'd made a few weeks ago about concerns about the operation of La Plaza del Sol. We asked you to come in, put it on the agenda, so we could actually discuss it with you. And so, I'll ask you briefly if you just, like, share your concerns with the board. Can you pull the mic towards you, so?
It's just myself and Michael tonight. Phil's not here.
Okay.
I'll try to make it brief.
Can't hear...
I'll try to make it brief. I'm not only here to complain about the motel, but also to ask everyone to help with the issues and do something about it at the end of it. We finally got some of the documents that we requested. We got them three days ago. We got the police logs for the La Plaza del Sol motel, but we were denied the fire and rescue logs. With that being said, from 2017 to present time, there are fifty-six pages of police logs, fifteen items on each page. So, that tells me it's about eight hundred and forty items on here. And some of them being unattended deaths, sex offender registry, domestic violence, noise violations, suspicious persons, warrant services, drug overdoses, disturbances, restraining orders, auto theft, a lot of health and well-being checks, threats, verbal threats, a lot of directed patrols, which I'm perfectly happy with. But I have a feeling the other businesses in town, such as Holiday Estates and South Cape Resort, Sea Mist, New Seaberry, Santuadin, don't have to have all these directed patrols. And I'm totally happy with what the police department does. I have no problem with them at all. My major concern is the fact that this is happening constantly and has to be taken care of. Way back when you guys did the settlement with Peter White, which transferred over to the owners now, it was said that that agreement happening could potentially be detrimental to the residential neighborhood. And I think it absolutely has been and is detrimental to all of the residents on Route 130. This place has brought nothing but havoc. And it's also brought down all of our property values. It's, it's unsafe. It's, it's out of control. The lack of management there, it's a free-for-all. And no one is held accountable for any of the actions that go on there. And I also wanted to question the actual agreement that was made with the motel and with the town, and if it's being... was made with the motel and with the town, and if it's being monitored, and when it's monitored, and how it's monitored, and if there is any penalty for it not being monitored. Because I personally know for a fact that the occupancy in some of the units are not being held to the agreement with the amount of people that are in there and everything that goes on. And I would really like to see something happen with this place because it's absolutely unacceptable what goes on there. And it's just totally out of control. And I really don't think this would be happening in other areas of Mashpee. I think it's almost out of sight, out of mind kind of thing because it's on Route 130, and a lot of people don't pay attention to it. And I think it's time that somebody pays attention to what's happening here.
Okay. Well, I think our ability to regulate is based on compliance with codes. And so I'd like to ask the town manager if he could speak to the issues of code compliance and what the town's done to assure that.
I understand the complaint. It's frustration, and we had some communication a while back, and there's no question that she's passionate about the substance to the complaints. However, I did assemble the police chief, the fire chief, the health agent, and the building inspector, and I believe that was it, to determine whether or not there were any violations of any code, any bylaw, any law, or any other provision, regulation, that the town could take enforcement action on. And I was specifically told no to their knowledge. So I understand that she's got history relative to some frustrations. I think the best thing at this particular time would be to follow up with an articulated written complaint that could be specifically investigated for the merits of the specificity within the complaint, and let the chips fall where they may, and let it fall within the jurisdiction of whatever authority it may be.
In particular, you know, the agreement you referenced, you know, if there are specific provisions to that agreement.
Oh, on that agreement, uh...
I think that big rate appreciates all of us.
Yeah, the new owner is subject to certain provisions, and would be more than happy to provide you with a copy of it if you don't have it.
I have it here.
Okay.
I have the nine units that are available for stays longer than 90 days, and I also have the requirements. The two bedrooms are a limit of four people, or two adults and three children. The efficiency units are limited to two adults and/or one child. The studio units are limited to two people, and these, this isn't happening.
Rodney, is the landlord, does he have to supply a book that says that these, how many people are living there? Do they have to keep a log?
I believe he does. Have I seen it? No, I have not. However...
Yes, they do. State law says they do, and it has to be provided to the health...
I haven't seen it.
Health department. I understand that health department and I believe fire are the two that have authority within a motel.
So, to the point, there's no doubt that there were certain provisions within the language that was written up by council that the new owner is responsible for, and he was informed of that by us at a meeting shortly after some of these issues were brought up at the last meeting.
I think it's a fair ask to see whether that has been complied with and to report back to us so we can know that. Because beyond that, I mean, I don't think that, you know, because there are a lot of service calls, that doesn't put us in the position to be able to restrict anyone's operations. If they're in compliance with the code, and they're in, if they're in compliance with the agreement, the fact that they have a lot of police calls in and of itself isn't a basis for the town to impose any restriction on them. If, however, they're not in compliance, then we do have some ability to impose restrictions to make sure that they do comply with that. So not having seen that information, I think it would be useful for us, for you guys to find out and to report back to us on that.
The only way you would find anything out like that would be a spot check, where people would come in in the evening and do, knock on the door and come in and do a spot check.
Spot check.
For, I mean, otherwise, they're not gonna put it in the book. I mean, if two people rent the unit, or four people, and four more come in during the evening.
Right.
How would anybody know? They're not gonna be in the book.
We'll add that to the code inspector that we're gonna approve in May.
Well, I mean, you know, in all seriousness...
Before May, before May.
In all seriousness, we talk about this all the time. We come up with all these terms and conditions on all sorts of things.
I know.
And we don't have a basis to enforce it, and it's a big waste of time. So I think if an expectation was set that there were gonna be certain conditions, we should figure out how to assess whether it's being complied with, and if it is, fine. And if it isn't, then we all need to hold somebody accountable for it, or we should stop kidding ourselves that we're doing anything.
Right. And if the logs are in check, and I don't know whether they are or they aren't, I haven't personally seen them, I think what we should focus on is whether or not there's a specific date and time in which a violation was occurring, and if so, let the respective authority investigate that accordingly and find out what the results are. And obviously, if there are violations, then there is enforcement action that the town can take and should take.
Right. But I think we need to make a serious effort determining whether there's compliance or not.
Exactly.
And I have a major concern about the house that is attached to the office.
To the office?
Yes. The ongoings in that house are absolutely 100% a nuisance and out of control. The fighting. And I know you've told me before, because I've dealt with you before when you were chief, to give you guys a call.
That was a little while ago.
Yeah. This has been going on forever, since it's, since it was sold from the original owners. But in the last three years, it has literally gotten to be beyond, it's just, it's absolutely unacceptable. And I know you've said in the past, you know, just give the police a call, and you know, you'll come down. But 90% of the time, if I do call, which I don't like to call because I get harassed from the people at the motel, that you're the one calling all the time and this and that, which I don't. But 90% of the time, by the time the police show up, whatever's happening is done. Like last night, they were out there arguing for, I don't know, about 20 minutes, and I got ready to call. They saw me outside. They all dispersed. And then a little while later, somebody pulled the fire alarm, and the fire alarms are going off for 15, 20 minutes over there. And it's just, I don't understand how a business can be allowed to have all of this craziness go on and affect so many people in a residential neighborhood. I don't understand how a business can be...
I think it's a fair question. I think we ought to look further into the compliance with that agreement, which goes beyond the code compliance, and see where that leads us. And we will do that.
I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
If we can, I'm sure this board would love to help you, but it's difficult. You see it. We're not across the street, but we'll certainly help.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next is discussion of the memorandum of understanding between the town of Mashpee and the Mashpee Old Indian Meeting House Authority for the Parsonage Restoration. You guys have some information you want to bring to light tonight?
We're close. Councilman Whedon is here this evening. We had an initial discussion that went very well, and we ended up passing something, a document to town council. Long story short, there's just one little glitch that needs to be taken care of, and I'm hoping that we can get this to you.
I spoke to David out in the hallway there, and we do have an amendment to the original MOU that I handed to him, and I will be emailing him another copy. We'd like to get it on the 23rd meeting and give the tribal council and the people that need to from their side a chance to review it. I don't know if you have any more to add to that.
That's the part that council is recommending be changed. That's why we're doing this.
And I was hoping to get it before tribal council for their consideration and approval before tonight's meeting. That didn't happen, so the additional time's agreeable. And if we could table it until the next meeting, that'd be...
No problem.
Agreeable.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you for your time.
Very good. I don't know if anybody had any issues they wanted to bring to the table so that...
That would help.
Yeah, so that we're not having a moving target here.
No volleys.
You know, the issue that Wayne and Rodney mentioned, I think would satisfy my concerns over the agreement.
My notes, well.
So I think if your council's willing to act on it, we'll take it up on the 23rd.
Hopefully so.
Okay, very good.
Let the town management take care of it, and we'll approve it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a discussion and approval of National Recovery Month, September 2019. So there's a proclamation on page two.
Mm-hmm.
Tom, you wanna, Ms. Clark, do you want me to read it? I don't care.
No, he's gonna read it.
I'll read it.
All right.
Proclamation. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness, and whereas we know addiction is a chronic but treatable disease, that treatment is effective and recovery is possible. And whereas, in addition, an estimated 14% of possible county residents are living with substance use disorders, and whereas, we must encourage relatives and friends of people with substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of the problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas, community support and reduced stamina, or stigma, significantly contributes to an individual's ability to achieve and maintain recovery and continue in positive ways both locally and around the nation. And whereas, this Mashpee Substance Use Task Force wishes to honor individuals in recovery as well as allies of recovery. And now, therefore, we, the Mashpee Board of Selectmen, by the authorities vested in us, do hereby officially proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Recovery Month in Mashpee, and call upon the people of Mashpee to observe this month with appropriate programs, events, and activities that support this year's Recovery Month theme. Together, we are, we are strong. In witness thereof, we have unto set our hands and cause the great seal of the town of Mashpee to be affixed on this ninth day of September 2019. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
Most certainly. A motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Next is a discussion of town manager goals for 2019, 2020. We do this annually as part of Rodney's goal-setting and evaluation process. It's put before you for any alteration or approval. It's a fairly broad and comprehensive list of things that are in front of them, and you know, with three things identified as priority, but most everything on this list is of some significance on the day-to-day operation. So if people are comfortable with it, I think we set it. We, you know, it gets evaluated at the end of each fiscal year, so we need to have a set of objective goals in order to do a proper evaluation.
Agreed.
These all right?
I'm good.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the town manager's goals for 2019, for 2020?
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay. Next is the discussion and execution of the October 21st Annual Town Meeting Warrant. There's a memo on your packet that looks like this with some yellow markings on it. We held two articles, Article 8 and Article 26, for some language tweaks that preserve the intent of the, of the bylaws as they were proposed, but provide a little bit more clarity and specificity, and therefore the ability to adequately enforce. Those are highlighted for you in the markup. And if people are comfortable with them, we can vote to include the amended articles in the warrant, take a position on their passage, and then finalize the warrant. So if anybody has any questions, Glenn's here. Glenn and Wayne and I met last week, week before last, I guess, and went over some of these changes.
I like how you cleaned up some of the wording.
The language.
The language, yes.
I think we have a better bylaw proposal now.
I think it is.
Yes.
The assistant manager's got some correspondence.
Okay.
We received correspondence, actually, the eighth, which was yesterday, from the Cape Cod, Cape Cod Islands, Cape Island Realty.
Just making you aware.
I just wanted you to make you aware of it. I don't see this late date making many changes.
They contacted me last night and said that they had some additional tweaks. I notified them. I thought it was a little bit late in the process for us to take additional changes. I don't like...
Just making you aware.
I know. I don't like...
Late changes.
No, I don't like writing amendments into a warrant article that we're gonna then execute the same night.
Right.
So I think if there's some things in here that we think make some sense, we could offer an amendment on the floor at town meeting. But I think making a change at this point is, I appreciate his, your ongoing engagement in this issue, but I don't think we can do it tonight. And I told them that.
I would agree.
Just didn't want them to say that we didn't get told. Make you aware.
They also sent it to us in our email.
It came through us. Now, I got an email from Ryan last night.
I got mine, yes.
So, anyway, unless anybody has any issues or questions, I'd ask for a motion to include our, the amended Article 8 in the warrant as one action.
As revised.
As revised.
So, yeah.
That's what's reflected in draft six?
Mm-hmm.
Seven? Five?
Five.
In our packet. So the article, so as presented in the packet, you had revised Article 8. The motion made and seconded to include it in the warrant. Is it all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. And then I'd ask for a motion on whether we support passage of the same?
I make a motion to support.
I'll second that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. And then a motion to adopt the revised Article 26 as appearing in draft five of the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. And then a motion to support passage of Article, amended Article 26.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And with that, I believe we have concluded any changes.
And execute.
And would ask for a motion to execute the final warrant as reflected in draft five in our packet.
I make a motion to execute.
As discussed tonight.
Discuss tonight.
Yep.
Yep. You got a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. We're done with that.
The law, the warrant, right.
Yep. And then lastly, for new business items, we discussed at our last meeting, holding a series of special meetings to discuss wastewater issues and to address people's questions, with the idea being that if we got questions in advance, we could schedule a series of meetings, bring some speakers in, either whether they're affiliated with the town or outside sources, to try and answer those questions. So two things tonight. One is, we scheduled our first of those meetings a week from tonight at 6:00, and it's not specific to Mashpee, per se. What I've asked is for two town representatives from towns that had been largely seen as being behind us in the process a couple years ago, who have made a lot of progress on addressing their wastewater problems. I chose from towns that don't have infrastructure, so that they were kind of like us. So I've asked the former chair of the Orleans Board of Selectmen, Alan McLennan, to come in and discuss the process the Orleans Board of Selectmen went through.
Okay.
To engage and educate the public, and go from a denial of their wastewater program to this past spring, a $47 million bond issue that was passed unanimously. And to sort of say, from his perspective, now as a retired selectman, what it took to get there and how they, what lessons they learned.
Okay.
As a way to help us think about how we want to proceed. And then the other is Bud Dunham and one of his selectmen, Dave Sampson. I hope Dave is gonna join them, gonna come in and talk about the process that Sandwich has gone through over the last couple of years to set up the financing vehicle that they've adopted, and what some of their thinking was, and how they did it. And how they did it. Two different perspectives, similar thing. And I just thought it would be good for us to step back and hear how some other towns, both from the elected point of view and the management point of view, figured out how to move forward. You might like what they did, you might not like what they did. But I'll give you a chance to ask some questions and hear what other stories have been.
And, you know, and like on a lot of these things, it just, and I don't know if this will work with this, bringing it up at this time, but I don't think anybody here is opposed to implementing a wastewater plan at this time and moving forward at some point. But there's a new element that's just come to the table with us, and that's the base. And it wasn't there a month ago or so ago, because things have just changed, and it's been dropped on our lap. And there's a good possibility that it could solve a lot of problems, not just for us, for the abutting communities. So, I mean, I think that our situation is a little bit different. I think the sewer commission has done a pretty good job over putting a plan together, but things have changed drastically in a short period of time where we didn't have any of this information that this was a possibility.
It's true, but I think some of the issues about how you build consensus and how you cobble together the finances are common to all towns.
Finances, absolutely.
So the specifics of us are different, every town different. But there are some things that I thought at least we could learn from other towns that went through their process on how they did it.
Right, no question. With what Tom just said, I would like to, if, to ask Rodney, with your last meeting that you had with that new group that has come before you to talk about the base, is there any new information?
Yes, as a matter of fact, under manager updates, I have a proposed letter.
Oh, okay, so I'll wait on that then.
So that's the first one. It's next Monday at 6:00. Now, I've tried to put together a little schedule. You know, we talked about meeting every couple of weeks. And what I'd heard from people was there was a desire to stay on Monday nights because, A, there's not other competing board meetings on Monday nights, so the room is available, and other committees aren't active.
Sorry.
And people have the evenings open. So, but when you go and you start looking at Monday nights, it gets really hard in a hurry. So I looked at every Monday between now and the end of the year. And the only three that I could come up with were October 28th, November 25th, and December 9th. September 30th and December 23rd are out in my mind because there are two major Jewish holidays that begin those evenings. And October 14th and November 11th are state holidays. So three meetings, or three in addition to the one we have on the 16th, seems light. But I'm suggesting these three at a minimum. If people be willing to meet another night, we can add some. But I'd like to have a schedule because I think to answer the questions that you have, it'll be useful to bring in some outside speakers, and I need to give people some lead time.
Andrew, you had asked us for some questions that we would like to see. I would really like to figure out who's going to drive the boat, more or less. Are we going to look at a sewer district? And if we are, we should decide now, because to get legislation in place, it takes two years. So I think we really need, before we really get into the meat of this, we need to know how we're going to implement this.
I think some of that might come out, though, with...
I'm hoping.
I would suggest you have to have a whole discussion about all the issues and then decide that. That it's hard, you know, it's tricky to decide to say, you know, the town's going to run it, or some alternative entity's going to run it, until you hear, I think, and have the ability to think through all the other issues that come along with it.
Okay.
So I think that's the last question, not the first. But it's one that colors a lot of the questions that you ask along the way and what you want. So I mean, I think that's the $64,000 question at the end of the process.
I think you're both right, because the fact is, even if we do engage in a sewer...
I mean, the town's going to have to engage to start.
We're going to still have to take this, carry this ball for a while.
Something's going to have to take it over.
So...
So if there are lists of questions that people want, there's a number of different ways to, you know, to dig into these questions. So I'd be interested in getting from everybody, what are the big questions you want to answer? And I'll start to layer them onto the schedule based on who I can get to come in.
I would like also, on one of those nights, to talk about, are there any other alternatives for a treatment plan other than Asher's Path?
Me, locationally.
Locationally. And can we have a big chart that shows the plant at Asher's Path with the distances from the houses, everything outlined? So that we can have it here, so the people who live by there can come in, see where their house is accordingly to where the treatment plant is, so that we all can see. So we're all seeing the same thing at once.
So if we have, I'm assuming we'd start it off with the guest speakers.
Right.
I'm just taking an assumption here. Then are we going to ask the public to come in and speak quickly, transparently, and say, okay, I would also like this, like, add this to our questions? If it's not already on our list?
They can also email us at our town meeting.
And I think what I was thinking about doing was, you know, having these meetings run a little bit differently than some of our other ones. A little bit more workshop than formal meetings, so that people have the opportunity to listen to presentations. And then I think it makes sense to not force people to say what they have to say, what they've already decided they're going to say at the beginning of a meeting, but react to and respond to what they hear.
What would just turn...
No, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I agree with you, and what I'm saying is, I want their questions. If it's something that we're not thinking of.
Right.
If you can come up, and I'm talking about lining up and say, okay, you may have, as a citizen of Mashpee, you may have like three questions that, hey, I just was hoping to get these answers on these three questions. And then they move aside, and then we just, we keep on jotting all these...
We can do that at next meeting on the 23rd.
Okay.
Because if that's the case...
That's fine. But also, I think that I'd like the board's consent to run these discussions a little bit differently, so that they're a little bit more interactive.
Interactive, but I think that's good.
You know, people, we're going to have to set some tight ground rules to keep it civil and keep the personalities out of it and not have a lot of repetition, so that we can get through things in a reasonable amount of time. But I don't think that the structure, the way we do these meetings is necessarily the right way to do it, to make people feel like they had an opportunity to participate and are included in the process that we're going to go through.
If it could be done, I'd love to see a table in the middle of the floor with all of us standing around it and discussing it, looking at them out.
Right.
And, you know, the distances.
So I think there'll be different kinds of meetings depending on the subject matter. What would be really helpful to me is, you know, Carol's shared some of these questions with me.
Because I'm getting, I'm getting emails from people with questions.
And John, you've got some questions.
It's all in, and a lot of the same questions that you just asked.
I'm getting them as well.
All right, so, I mean, to the extent people can start to feed me some of these questions, I can begin to work a panel. I guess what I'd ask is, and I'll come back with a draft set of topics at our next meet, the special meeting next Monday with dates and some topics assigned to them, so we can start to have some structure. But would people be willing, I think three meetings is light. There's a lot to do. Would people be willing to, on the weekend, on the week of October 14th and November 11th, when we have a Monday holiday, people be willing to meet on that Tuesday? Just so we can build a little bit more...
Are there any meetings usually on Tuesday night?
What date is that, Andrew?
October 15th and November 12th.
I'm not sure, Andrew, but I will check the meeting schedule and see if we can get you...
I mean, it's a little bit of a moving target. I guess what I'm asking you guys is, can we, can we add a couple of meetings in the weeks that the holidays interrupt? Are people willing to sit down and do more meetings?
Second Tuesday is typically a board meeting for home builders.
Okay.
But that's always a moving target if it's a holiday, Monday, it may change.
Actually, this would be the third Tuesday. November would be the second Tuesday. Anyway, yeah.
But yes.
Anyway, if you could let me know, because it's, you know, it's impossible. I'll just tell you now, somebody's not going to like the schedule when we deviate from a Monday night.
Oh, no matter.
I just, no, I'm not talking about you guys, but somebody out there is going to say, it's a bad night because we can't get the room, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, we're just going to have to do it. But I'm going to try, you know, we'll try and keep the meeting numbers down to a reasonable amount. But I just think that if we're really going to dig into this with the intention of being...
And also, these people that Rodney is going to talk about, I'd like, if we could, have them come in, if they could, and talk to us about their program that they're presenting.
I haven't seen what he's handling around, so...
Oh, okay, okay.
And one last thing, so just for the, for the public-wise, you know, if we're looking for them to come in with questions, not, not opinions.
A statement, right.
We're not looking for their opinion, we're looking for their statements or questions
I agree.
as far as wastewater, so we can just formulate all those questions.
Right. Now, we can go further, that coming in at the beginning of the meeting with a statement on a subject where we're going to be discussing and getting new information kind of defeats the purpose.
That's right, I agree.
I'd like to encourage people to be willing to listen to the information that's being presented and then react to it, as opposed to coming in and saying, I don't like, I don't like this, even though something they may learn in the course of the conversation might actually change their opinion.
Right.
So having a, having a bunch of hard positions at the beginning, which is what public comment, as we do it, kind of forces people into, doesn't really get us where we want to go.
No, I know.
But I just, but I've been hearing a lot about people like saying, but I have some questions. I have questions. So that's, I'm looking for the public's support to say, come with your questions, don't come with your opinions yet.
That's right.
Let us tabulate all the questions, so we can try to get all the answers back, and then, then it'll come time to...
But I think in fairness to us, and to be honest with people, I think what we need to say is, the time to put the bulk of the questions on the table that you want answered is over the next week, 10 days, so that we can structure these meetings to answer them. If people, if people wait until December and say, you haven't answered my question, I didn't ask it yet, but you haven't answered it.
That's...
That's not, I just, I feel really strongly that...
That's why I want the questions now.
So people who have a question, if you know how to get a hold of any of us directly, do so. You know how to get a hold of these guys, do so. If you're not sure, go on our website, to the town manager, town selectman's office. There's a link, you can email us, we all get them. But I'm really going to make an effort to put together a list, an agenda of questions, and schedule when they're going to be done, and present it to everybody when we meet next Monday, so that everybody gets notice, in some instances, months in advance. If there's a particular subject matter that somebody has an interest in, they'll know when it's coming up. But I think, you know, we all have to be pretty disciplined about getting the questions on the table early enough that they can get answered through this process and not left till the end, because the what-about-what-about-what-about process will drag us beyond the point where we can take any action. And I think that we're all at the point where we want to move ahead.
Unfortunately, the only thing that's really thrown me is this, like I say, once again, the issue of the use of the base is, is more an option than it ever has been, as far as I've been told, as of recent turns of events. So this, all of this may be moot at this point, because if we do go to the base, and I like the base option, I think it makes a lot of sense. But if it does, the only reason that this meeting would, all this information and all this time, is if the base doesn't move forward, and we're still looking to go to the base. And I looked at, I pulled the map of the base, and maybe there's another location at the base further away, and maybe things could be moved, so...
See, unless something changes, that's what I'm saying. I think right now...
Move for what we have, and...
According to that presentation, this is where I strongly disagree, because I think the base could be the option in addition to other things that we do. But the base is not the silver bullet, only because there's so many unknowns, and we may not, at least, unless he tells us something different tonight. But they made it very clear, we're talking about eight to 10 years.
This is another, another thing that has come through, John, since that presentation.
So that's what I'm saying, so something could majorly change.
There's been new developments.
But we still have to gather a whole lot of facts.
It's, and it's on, I mean, this is, this is the one, but... Well...
But whatever, I mean...
But no matter how you, no matter where you go, it's going to cost a lot of money. And so figuring out how you pay for it, how you staff it, how you function, whether... There's a whole bunch of stuff that needs to get figured out that's insensitive to who runs the base facility.
And it's years down the road before it's be operational. But we need to put a shovel in the ground.
So anyway, anybody who has any other questions on this board, please get them to me, so I can get that scheduled together. And the public would be encouraged to do so as well. And we'll schedule a couple of meetings in addition to the Mondays, three that are listed in the memo.
Can you just say those three dates on Mondays, too?
Yeah.
December, uh, 28th.
We're doing 16th this coming Monday at 6:00. Then October 28th, November 25th, and December 9th. And we're going to look at something the week of October 14th and the week of November 11th, but they won't be on a Monday, because they're holidays.
What was the October one?
Nah, October 28th. We get kicked way far into October because of our meeting schedule and town meeting. So we lose a lot there in the holiday.
I'm just trying to keep track. I am going to Colorado, so I'm just...
And...
You can't.
From a, from a functional standpoint, obviously, it behooves us not to displace the Conservation Commission or the Planning Board or the ZBA or any of these other folks that are going to be using the room, only because sometimes they have these public hearings scheduled, and we want to be specific on what...
So maybe, and one of the things we contemplated was...
I was going to just add one more. That's what I was going to say. One option that we have is the library.
You know, it, it's, it sounds like it's really easy to meet every other week, you know, have a bunch of meetings between now and the end of the year, and it's not. When you layer on people's schedule, you layer on people's holidays, and you layer on room availability and other things that are locked in, it gets really hard really fast. And so I think we need to be flexible and willing to meet at some different locations or times in order to get this done on the timeframe we've all agreed to, which is for May town meeting.
Mondays always work because I always leave them open, just in case.
We all kind of do.
I know.
Right, yeah.
I know. So anyway, that's where we are with that. So send me questions. Rodney, manager's update. Or actually, anybody having liaison reports?
Liaison. At the, at the county level, the Assembly, we have been looking at and reworking the charter for the Assembly of Delegates. And some of the questions that have come up have been questioning whether we should reduce the number of towns to districts, down to five districts instead of 15 communities, with the delegate for five. So these questions have been bounced around, and so there's a lot of discussion going on. Nothing has changed so far, but it's...
legislate yourself out of a job?
No, yeah, it wasn't, you know, but it, that was what, it would be, yes, that's exactly. But it got to the point where the districts would be a total of 5,000 people, and Delegate Princey from Possible said, I have 5,000. He said, I can't keep up with 5,000 people, so it would be better for the towns to keep it as it is. You have better representation for a small town with an individual with hands-on. So we're working at it, so pay attention. It's televised, Possible County Government and Assembly of Delegates meeting. So sometimes they're interesting, not so much others, so...
Okay. Rodney, manager's update.
Okay, the PD has a 9/11 ceremony at 8:30 on 9/11. Just wanted to point that out to the public. Also, Mashpee TV has a tentative date to fix our audio system.
Good.
October 24th, it's going to take approximately four days. Did I say October?
Yes.
I meant September, I'm sorry. September 24th, it's supposed to be done by October 1st. And it's going to take about four days, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. Also, I believe Wayne distributed a letter that I can comment on a little bit more in a minute. I did want to give a shout-out to the Director of Assessing and some of the staff that worked on an item that we've been dealing with since 2017. As you all know, the Commonwealth, under various statutes, is mandated to reimburse towns and cities throughout the Commonwealth for lost tax revenue from land taken into ownership by the Commonwealth, which itself is tax-exempt as an entity. And we have felt that we've been short-changed for a while, and we got into a prolonged back-and-forth since 2017. Long story short, as Kenny Bates would say, we are going to receive from the Commonwealth over the next five years over the next five years, an additional $1,206,934.
Nice.
So, I want to thank the assessor, I want to thank Attorney Costello, and I know I'm forgetting a few others as well, but it was a long, hard-fought, I don't want to say battle, but negotiation, and we feel that this was a good compromise.
Well done.
Mm-hmm.
Well done.
So, I just want to salute staff on that. Signed off on a MEMA FEMA reimbursement to the town from the March 2018 storm and flooding. The paperwork is quite excessive, and I compliment staff for that. And I also want to distribute an email. I believe it was Selectman Cotton that had asked about the sewer project and the 151 improvements.
Yes.
So, here are your options, and I'm not looking for an answer tonight.
I know, roll back five years, right?
Yep. But I just, I just wanted to follow up and make you aware of your options. I also just want to make you aware that as far as the DPW garage that was approved through the CIP process, there's been a small change to the, to the, to the design, two overhead doors as opposed to one. So, I checked with Town Council as to whether or not he felt that that had to go back before CIP, and the answer was no. That I could authorize that as a change order, but it, and it's within the budget, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. And. I believe that's it, unless I missed something.
The letter.
The letter.
Oh, the letter.
Oh, the letter. Yes, Mr. Kennedy came in and had a discussion with me. I'm also going to be meeting with the Upper Cape managers in follow-up to this, as well as Joint Base Cape Guard. There's been a lot of discussion regarding the issue, and I'm just looking to see whether or not this is something you want me to sign off on or not.
Now, this is a, an outside group coming into the base?
Uh, yes. I believe the deadline is September 30th, and.
And they will build the treatment plant?
They would take care of the infrastructure upgrades, and they would be responsible for the operations, and then there would be a fee system implemented to the respective towns that would sign on.
Sign up.
Obviously, we're a long ways from knowing precisely where we're going to be because, quite frankly, we're not even at September 30th yet, so I don't know.
But this is just another option coming forward?
It is.
Well, this is, I met with him as well. This is the, so the Department of Defense has put a September 30th deadline for entities that want to take over the operation of the treatment plant.
Okay.
And so, this is the entity that's going to be competing with the town of Barnstable for.
Barnstable has?
Barnstable is intending to submit a bid as well to gain control and operation of the treatment plant.
Do you know if anybody else out there is doing this?
No.
Just those two?
I'm only aware of those two. And so, these guys are competitors.
Do they have a track record? Have they done one before?
They have represented that they are, this is their business model. They go in and take federal facilities and run them.
So, they must be able to get federal money and?
Well, they're not sharing what their finance plan is.
Wow.
So, anyway, they're making a proposal to Department of Defense, Barnstable's making a proposal to Department of Defense. This letter would mean that if these guys win, we'd be telling them, we talked to you about whether you would be somebody that we would consider to help meet some of our needs. Obviously, if the town of Barnstable wins the bid.
Has Barnstable come to us yet?
They've been, that's his, that's the group we've been, he's been working with.
Okay.
Well, initially, I was working with Falmouth, Sandwich.
Bourne.
And Bourne, and Barnstable was.
Came in on the last minute.
Yes.
Okay.
But Barnstable's the one that's making the submission. They're asking the Department of Defense to award them the operation of the utilities at the base.
And are they doing kind of the same thing, setting up and then going after doing the initial?
I think the Barnstable proposal assumes that Mashpee, Sandwich, and Barnstable, at least initially, are going to participate in moving water, wastewater to the base, but a lot of details to be figured out.
I think so.
Discharge has not been discussed yet.
No, so.
Okay.
So, that's the.
I, this letter makes some sense because we have absolutely no control over who gets control of the base facility. And so, depending on what the federal government decides.
We need to be friends with both of them.
That's the point. If you want to say that whoever wins.
Yeah.
You know, we're agnostic about who wins. If it makes sense for us to go to the base, we'll work with you, but you don't know, I don't, nobody knows anything about how the numbers work, what the timing is, what the deal would be.
So, would the Kennedy group, founding, yeah, the Kennedy group, would that include Barnstable, the treatment of their water, or the discharge, or are they affluent, or is it just the four Upper Cape towns?
All I know is that they, they were, after I had breakfast with him, he was going to talk to Barnstable.
Oh, okay, so we don't know.
So, I don't know.
Okay.
But they would be participating just like us.
You talked to him after I did.
And he doesn't know that, nobody knows that.
No, I don't know the answer.
So, you're going to be involved with the managers?
He could.
No idea.
Yes.
And they will be disclosing?
But, well, we're going to be having further follow-up discussions in order to bring some suggestions or information back to our respective boards.
Will you have?
But he's under a tight deadline, and based on your schedule, I've either got to sign this or refuse to sign it, and I didn't want to.
I think we should authorize Rodney to sign it, it just keeps our options open.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes, no question.
No question.
We just got to.
Can I just get a vote on that?
I make a motion to have Rodney sign.
Rodney needs a vote.
Letter.
All in favor?
No question, yes.
Yes, yes.
Actually, I'm sorry, Wayne reminded me, for protocol, could you add that to the agenda and then take a vote based on it being?
Look for a motion to place the town manager's authorization to sign a letter of interest with Converge LLC to the agenda, given the unforeseen nature of the request and the timing.
Yep, some will approve, yep.
All right, second?